Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 10th, 2023 City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If you will all please stand with me for a moment of silent prayer and a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. During tonight's meeting, each agenda item will have a time for public comment. If there was anyone here that has a comment that is not related to an agenda item, now would be the time to be recognized and speak. Seeing none, we'll move to the first item, which will be the meeting minutes from September 12th, 2023. Need to... Motion and a second, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 12th, 2023.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Doomey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Flip for it? Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, or number one, would be a presentation, the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element Update. Ms. Simpson?
This is a mini presentation. I just wanted to introduce you to the transportation element. We are... We, the Community Development Department, are updating the comprehensive plan. It's been quite a while since it's been updated. And the reason that I'm bringing the transportation element without the other nine or 10 elements is because I had a different funding source. They had to scrimp and save and find money. Metro Plan gave me money and a consultant to help me with mine. In my opinion, the transportation element is more complicated than the stuff that those planners do. But they probably don't think that. But what we did was, we coordinated our data sources and our forecasts for population and some other thing that have to be common. What slowed us all down was waiting for a certain data set to come in. We went ahead and went forward, but we've coordinated what we've done with, I keep pointing at them, my colleagues that do the land use planning. So what you have, what I handed out for you today is the draft version of the goals, objectives, and policies, and it's just one part of the transportation element. The second part is all the data and analysis. We'll see all the roadways in the city, their existing conditions, the near term, which we picked the year 2027 as our interim year, and then our long-range year, our horizon year is 2050. So we did forecasts for what traffic will look like in 2027, and then in 2050 also, which, you know, I'll probably be dead, but, you know, it's a long way out there, but we do the best we can. Maybe not, but I won't be here. So the process that we're going through right now is, I wanted to use this meeting as kind of the kickoff for the public involvement. We're going to try and get it as much as we can. Our public involvement is going to, we're going to have some in-person opportunities. You'll see us around town when there's already an event, handing out information. We may have a survey. We'll be doing a lot of things online. My consultant has done, it's called a media room. It's an online event where you enter the room and look through all the documents and maps, and it allows you to write your comments right then. And between now and, let's see, at your next meeting, it's going to be the official kickoff, where I'm going to present the ordinance and ask you to recommend that the city council send it for transmittal to DEO. And I think then DEO has, well, I'm going to do that. Your next meeting is on the 14th, and if the stars align, I'll have it on the agenda for council on the 15th, which is the next day. But that may roll to December if we have a robust discussion on the 14th, and I feel like things need to be modified before they go to council. We'll go to council, they will hopefully recommend transmittal to DEO. DEO has a small amount of time to review it, 30 days, Bobby, is that what it is? 30 days. So it will come back to council for final adoption sometime in January. That's... That is the timeline process. But I'm going to, at your next meeting, I'll go through in more detail the goals, objectives, and policies, and also the technical analysis. The reason you're not seeing the technical analysis today, and I will be emailing that out too, is mostly because I saw some anomalies in the data that I wasn't comfortable with. So I'm going to adjust those before you see them. And then, we may not agree with what I came up with might not be what you think is how we should be planning for the future. This plan is, it doesn't have a lot of roadway modifications, but it has, it shows needs for access management, signals, turn lanes. I mean, there are some roads in 2050 that fail. We have very few that fail in our mid-range year, 2027. And that's where I got a little off with my consultant, because what I see and what you see doesn't comport with the data that came in. So I want to make those adjustments. So this is a complete rewrite? Of the whole comp plan? It's just not this piece. And if you think it would be helpful, I will be happy to send you via email the old comp plan, transportation element, so you can see how we've modified it. It was sometime in the 90s when we had the full write of the comp plan. So we've changed, things have changed, our priorities are different. I think that we've captured the things that are important right now, but you may have a different opinion, and really, it's your responsibility to tell me what I'm missing, what you want to see different. So with that, if you want to ask me any questions, I will do my best to answer.
Yeah, I have a question. No, no, I was just thanking her. Do you... All right, Commissioner Ryan.
I'm sorry, I've got a question. I didn't see, I didn't get a chance to read the whole thing, because I just got it tonight. And I didn't see anything about the road safety audit. The last road safety audit in Orange County District 2 was 2010. I realize that's Orange County, but Apopka has some type of, we have some type of road safety audit?
Would you define for me what your definition of road safety audit is?
That's not my... Okay, there was, in 2010, there was a road safety audit done by Orange County District 2. And as far as I can tell, there has not been another road safety audit.
My understanding about what Orange County did in that year was, they did an analysis of traffic conditions in northwest Orange County. Is that what you're talking about?
They called the, they called the orange, they called it a road safety audit for Orange County District 2.
What kind of items did it have in it?
You're not familiar with it?
No.
From 2010?
It's a traffic study. I think it's just, their terminology is different, but it's basically a traffic study. That was the point that I brought up a while back, is that I had asked that question via email to them, is, you haven't looked at the roads in this section since 2009? Why?
Yeah, my guess, it was probably a capacity study to show what roads were overcapacitated and what roads were not.
That's exactly what it is. I know which one you're talking about, I just didn't realize it was called a road safety audit. But they're doing another one. They've been taking, they took a year to scope it. I think they might have had it over in their procurement department to advertise it. I have no role in that. That's for northwest Orange County. We're doing the city. Now, it requires coordination with the county.
But I think the city should do a road safety audit also, for the city road.
Well, if you're defining road safety audit as what I'm calling the data analysis section of the transportation element, then that is what we're doing. And I think that's what you're saying. You want me to look at the roads and say, what's blowing up? What intersections are blowing up? What needs to be improved?
And I want you to go back and look at the Road Safety Act for Orange County in 2010, and duplicate that for the city.
Let me enter, see. One of the things that Orange County has and the state has that we do not have are arterials and primary connectors. We've got a few roads, like Kelly Park, portions of Park Avenue, but the majority of those are all Orange County roads. We typically would not do a road study or a capacity study for major, major roads.
Well, I think you should...
We have local roads primarily that we're responsible for. And that's what you have to understand, what our limitations are compared to the county and the state.
I understand that perfectly, but I think you need to work with Orange County on a road safety audit.
We do. If they have, if they have questions, we consult with them on a weekly basis.
We need to push them to have a new study, because the last one was done in 2009, and then they issued it in 2010. That's 14 years ago. A lot has changed in that area in the last 14 years, more so than the 50 years before that.
True.
And they're doing that. It's scoped. I can give you my colleague at Orange County that's heading that up. His name's Brian Sanders. He's a transportation planning manager, I think. His number is 407-836-8022.
She's got these memorized, because she talks to him on a weekly basis.
He would be happy to talk to you about that. When I talked to him about it about two weeks ago, they had just finished scoping it, and now they have to advertise it, because it's going to be a very expensive analysis. But rest assured, in our, in our data analysis, our study, part that goes with our transportation element, I included all the roads. I didn't discriminate whether or not they were city-owned roads, city-maintained roads, county-owned or county-maintained. They're all in there. Everything that within our, within and around our city limits are included. I've got DOT roads in there, because the comp plan tells us...
So long story short, is, we've got the data and analysis for our transportation element, and we're working with the county for their study that will be forthcoming.
Well, I just think we need to work closer with Orange County.
We do. We do.
I just rattled off somebody's phone number. I think I spent a lot of time with them.
I've been doing this for 39 years, and we work closer with Orange County than I think most cities work in South Florida and Central Florida.
Well, I think Golden Gem Road is very, it's extremely unsafe. It's getting worse now, because of heavy traffic on there. You can look at the edge of the road, you can see where cars are driving on the edge of road, deteriorating the road. You can see where they're driving off the road, to get down the road. I talked to, is it true that Orange County offered the city $2 million to annex Golden Gem Road?
No.
No.
Yeah, well, Christine Moore told me that. She offered you $2 million to annex Golden Gem Road.
I would like to see where it was offered. In what form? Yeah, we need to go on.
Now, we're interrogating them over Orange County roads and what they did.
Yeah.
Is that in writing? Has it been presented to us?
That's what I'd like to see, how that was presented.
If you, if you communicate with Christine Moore, perhaps you could ask her that question, why hasn't that road study been done since 2010?
Yeah, Christine Moore, Christine Moore needs to talk to staff.
No one asked for it.
Mr. Ryan?
That's the problem I have.
Next time you talk with Commissioner Moore, could you ask her to talk to staff?
Again, not relevant to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Correct. We need to move on. I get your drift on this, but I think you got mine, too.
I'm sorry?
I think you understand me also. We need to talk to Christine Moore, because if she's telling you one thing, and we don't have any proof of anything, it's, he said, she said.
I would like to see that cleared up.
Me too.
Between our city council and Christine Moore, it's their job to talk to them about the roads and the infrastructure.
Correct.
So, and again, and I'm not patronizing you, but because you say she said this, where's it in the writing that they offered us $2 million? And again, if we're going to go off what somebody says somebody says, it was relayed to me by Mrs. Moore, by Mrs. Richardson, that when she asked Mrs. Moore about Golden Gem, her exact words were, "Not on my priority list." Okay, so what's changed between now and then? That's what she said. Now, you're saying $2 million, where is it? Where's the $22 million in the last 18 months? Well, that's why she offered $2 million.
We need to get back to what this question is in terms of the presentation and get off on the hypotheticals.
It has nothing to do with our planning and zoning, or what Pam's doing there. Orange County is a separate issue. So if you want to bring it up as new business at the end, then we'll discuss it then. Fair enough.
I would suggest that you, when you see the data analysis, you'll see the roads that we looked at, and what our recommendation's going to be, and then we can have that discussion absent of what Orange County's going to do. So, I mean, because that would be a relevant discussion.
I'd like to ask a question, because currently, working, I work for Orange County, and we are currently doing an FDOT, I think it's some sort of highway safety grant program, that allows, it allows us to make contact with pedestrians and cyclists, and we even give them information. We kind of educate them on how to use the crosswalk and all of that. Would this include things such as that?
There is a section in here, because we're very involved in Vision Zero, and we work with Best Foot Forward, and we do a lot of safety audits, like what you're describing. We pick certain intersections, and with our PD department, we have events where some brave soul from the police department walks across bad intersections, and then his buddy is down around the corner, and if the driver does something really heinous, like doesn't yield and speeds, then they probably get a ticket. Otherwise, they just get educated. But we do have, that is, that whole theme of safety, pedestrian, bicycle, and other rolling, whatever you call what other people do, it's spread all through this. Safety is an overarching theme through the whole goals, objectives, and policies.
I just wondered, because that's something, like I said, something that we do in Orange County, and it seems to work, seems to help out, because there's certain targeted areas where we get a lot of hit and runs, things of that nature. And I know there have been probably a couple here, too, particularly on the trail.
Just be careful crossing that street.
Yeah. Well, usually, it's because people are not using the crosswalk. But then also, in this day and age, you have a lot of distracted driving going on, so...
Yep.
Yes, and look for that, and if you don't think that we sufficiently hit that, let us know, and I'll be happy to beef that up. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Richardson. All right. Public hearing number one, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment. 3585 and 3603 Golden Gem Road. Owners: Albert McKinney, Susan Castillo, Christopher Cosby Johnson. Applicants: Albert McKinney, McKinney, and Christopher Johnson. Location: 3585 and 3603 Golden Gem Road. Ms. Sanchez?
Good evening. Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This sir requests to recommend approval of the Future Land Use Amendment for 3585 and 3602 Golden Gem Road, changing the future land use designation from rural settlement to mixed use. The properties are located east of Golden Gem Road, west of State Road 429, and south adjacent of the Parkview Preserve subdivision. It's approximately 20 acres in size. It's been determined that these subject properties may be considered to be part of the Kelly Park Interchange Form Based Code area, based on the following reasons unique to the properties: A future land use designation to allow density of up to five dwelling units per acre, justified to maintain continuity with the surrounding areas to the north and buffered by existing uses to the south. Properties are at the southeasternmost terminus of the KPI one-mile radius, the city stormwater retention pond located to the east and south, the Hubbard Construction Solid Waste Facility directly to the west, Orange County's waste site to the southwest, and no other opportunities available to connect other properties in that area to the KPI. There are nine findings listed in Section 2.5 of the Land Development Code in determining whether or not the proposed future land use amendment is to be adopted. The applicant has provided responses to these items to assert their position in the staff report, and staff has also provided responses to them. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Future Land Use Amendment from rural settlement to mixed use. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff? Okay. An applicant here, and do they have a presentation?
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Albert McKinney, representing the owners of 3603 Golden Gem Road and 3585 Golden Gem Road. It would occur to me that it would be superfluous to make any further comments. Staff have done an excellent job in providing you the information. However, I will take a seat and be available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Hang on, sir. Anyone have questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
I do. I have a question. Mr. McKinney, at the Golden Gem Road issue, if I recall correctly, weren't you here a while back when we were looking at some planning and zoning on that road?
Yes, sir.
We shouldn't develop anything else until the road is improved?
That's correct, sir.
So what has changed?
It's been changing in as much as that the city now are in, they're talking to Orange County about changes to the road, and that those changes will obviously come about at some point in the near future. They say that the changes will be between two and five years to take place. Our property, if it was five units per acre, would give us 100 units. 100 units, the impact fees would be useful to upgrade Golden Gem Road. I know that impact fees aren't normally allowed to upgrade roads, but where there's capacity issues, then impact fees can be used to upgrade the road. My current understanding is that Kelly Park VB Developments own a large section on the easterly side of Golden Gem Road, but that only comes down to, I believe, Trussell Trail. So that if the city decide to upgrade the road, they will only be upgrading it down to Trussell Trail. That, of course, would leave a bottleneck between Hubbard Construction's plant and the Trussell Trail. And a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. If we currently look at Golden Gem Road, Golden Gem Road is 18 feet wide at Trussell Trail. It doesn't meet the capacity needs for school buses and fire engines to pass coming in opposite directions. Therefore, any further impact fees that you can bring in from Golden Gem Road is going to be an advantage to the other community on Golden Gem Road and ourselves. I mean, I've been stuck...
That's fine, but the, they, the plat that you were against, because it was going to overload the road, they have impact fees, too. So that's, the only thing that's changed is this benefits you now, and it didn't benefit you.
No, sir, that's incorrect.
Do you don't own this property?
I own part of the property.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is incorrect.
And so it benefits you, if this property is...
That's right. It does benefit me, but it's not simply because it's benefiting me that I've made these arguments for a number of years. I've been arguing for the past five years that Golden Gem Road required to be changed. All I'm saying...
And that's fine, but arguing with us on Golden Gem Road is irrelevant, as we just discussed earlier, and I'm not going to go down this road. However, Golden Gem Road belongs to Orange County. Okay? But my question to you is, is that you said specifically, and I looked it up, I watched it again, that there should be no further development until the road is improved. Now, you're saying that, well, Orange County's going to do it between two to five years. That's not any information that's been passed to us.
Okay.
It just seems hypocritical to come in here, and then 30 days later, come back, and now it's okay, because it benefits you.
I would like to remind you what Commissioner Kyle Becker said. When he proposed that there would be the development to Windy Ridge, which is something like 3,000 houses on Golden Gem Road along, and some commercial vehicles, he made the statement, "At some point, you must take a leap in faith and make a start to doing something." And the die was cast back in 2004, when the KPI was brought into the area. If we do nothing now to try and improve the road, then so be it. But what I'm suggesting is, the impact fees from our property now would be a blessing to Golden Gem Road and a blessing to the city. I'm not coming here today saying, okay, we're not offering anything in return. I'm offering a solution. What I'm saying to you is, impact fees can be used to widen a road. It can't be used to improve a road, but it can be used to increase capacity. Our impact fees would probably allow between quarter and half a mile of the road from Trussell Trail down to our property to be expanded and to be improved. And I think that's critical for everybody on Golden Gem Road.
And I agree, the impact fees are important. The problem is making the impact fees that we pay in be used for that matter. And your information, where did you get the information that between two and four years, that's going to be improved by Orange County? They've never relayed to that. I've asked that question specifically and told there is no plan.
So my understanding is that there was a pioneering agreement between the city and the developers. I've been in contact with the developers, and the information was given to me by the developers.
In my understanding of the pioneering agreement, they left out Golden Gem Road.
That's correct.
Now, Mr. Hip, we're just approving, yeah, Sean, Mr. Hip, we're just approving a zoning change right now. We're not approving the development, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's just stick with, let's just stick with the zoning change, then. That's something you would tell me, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. Is there anyone from the public here who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we find the proposed change in future land use designation from rural settlement to mixed use compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the Future Land Use Amendment, subject to the findings and facts presented in staff report and exhibits.
Thanks, sir.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Mott. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, item number two, change of zoning. 2301 Coral Hill Road. Owner: HCH Development LLC. Applicant: Sarah Mayer, Caro Dewberry Engineers. Location: 2301 Coral Hill Location, 2301 Coral Hills Road.
Good evening, this is Dr. Jean Xon at the Planning and Zoning Division.
Excuse me, can you speak up a little bit, or just get closer? There you go.
Is it okay?
Better, better.
Okay, thanks. So the item is a rezoning application locates at 2301 Coral Hill Road. Applicant is requesting a rezoning from CC Community Commercial to CR Regional Commercial for the operation of a landscape company. The total site area is 6.36 acres, and future land use of the property is commercial, and the surrounding area are commercial and agricultural. Current zoning is CC, and surrounding area are CC, CR, and agriculture. The DRC has recommended approval, and the recommended motion is approval of the rezoning from CC to CR. Staff member and applicant are here to respond to any questions.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone have questions of staff?
No, sir.
No.
All right. The applicant here, do they have a presentation?
Good evening, Sarah Meyer with Dewberry, 800 North Magnolia Avenue, Orlando, Florida. Here on behalf of the property owner. I do not have a presentation, just happy to answer any questions you might have, and we are in agreement with staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Anyone have questions of the applicant?
Do I have a question?
Mr. Mott?
Hi.
Hi.
In the project summary, it mentioned contractor's office. Is this going to be like a permanent building, or is this a temporary one until a permanent one gets built? Or I didn't understand.
No, so the landscape company's intention is to build a permanent structure there to operate, have their corporate headquarters there to operate out of office staff, yes.
Okay. And then there'll be a temporary structure until the permanent one's built, or?
I'm not sure that's been decided yet.
Okay.
They are currently located elsewhere in central Florida, so it's possible they may continue to operate there until this one is fully constructed. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have questions of applicant?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I can I move to find the proposed change of zoning from community commercial to community regional commercial consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff reports and exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Doomey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Do we have any old business? New business?
Yes, I have some new business. Yeah, can we make a recommendation to the city council about when the City of Apocca annexes both sides of a road? That they should also annex the road itself? That way the city can ensure adequate infrastructure for those developments?
In accordance with the joint planning agreement, we already do. We already take over responsibility for the roads whenever we have property on both sides.
What about Golden Gem Road?
Okay.
There's Florida legislation governing-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Hitt, what about Golden Gem Road?
We have portions that are going to be on both sides, but that's also a different type of a road.
I'm sorry, Pam, go ahead.
There are three kinds of roads. There's like local neighborhood roads, and those are automatically ours when a subdivision gets built, unless the developer wants to make those private roads. Why they would want to take on that expense, to each his own. Then there are functionally classified roads. Those are roads like Golden Gem Road, Park Avenue, Benyon, Akoya-Popka. And those roads are governed by Florida statute. And they say that in order for us to take over those roads, we have to have an agreement with Orange County. Now, there are times on those roads, if the property was annexed prior to 1995 along the road, we assume responsibilities for the maintenance of the right-of-way. But anything after 1995, if it gets annexed, we still have no responsibilities, which is why we have no responsibilities on Golden Gem Road right now. We have Park Avenue, it's here and there. We cannot just annex those roads. Then there are other roads, back to the local roads, that aren't like neighborhood roads. And it's called the 50% rule. These are non-functionally classified roads. If we annex more than 50%, 50% or more of the properties along that road, we automatically assume responsibility for those roads. Those are the ones that Jim's talking about. We try and annex that part of the road, because taking over responsibility and annexing the road are two different things. We can have responsibility for the road. I don't know if y'all all heard about, let's see. No, that wouldn't be a good example. Those roads, we still have to annex the road to bring it within the confines of the city, but it doesn't change the fact that that is essentially our road to maintain. And those would be roads like Orange, Main Street, not Park Avenue, but Main, some of the grid roads around the city. We don't we have to meet the 50% rule. So you can't just say, "Well, you annex something on Golden Gem Road, and we annex that piece of the road." It doesn't work that way.
What's the 50%? 50% rule, what is that? Can you explain that to me?
That's for local roads. If we annex, what's a good road? Yeah.
If we're on one side of the road, we typically if we're on one side of the road, and we do, the whole road, we would take over the responsibility of-
Sorry. We end up taking over responsibility of the road. If we're on both sides, we definitely do.
No, I agree with that.
From logical terminology-
Golden Gem is a functionally classified road that's governed by state regulations.
It's a different layer, okay, Rogers Road. Do you know where Rogers Road is?
Yes, oh yeah, that's a problem.
That's a good example. So-
All that development, that road should have been improved before all that development back in there. That's unsafe road.
Orange County resurfaced it when they gave it to us.
There's nothing more important than safety. And we're required to to make sure that the public is safe, and also we have, infrastructure is adequate.
And we are working on that road along with the Akoya-Popka Road to get them back to where they should have been before we were even up in that area. When I was over in Claremont, one of the things that was very interesting is Lake County works with the cities very, very close. And when there's a Lake County road that Lake County wants to give up responsibility for, they first make sure that the improvements are up to speed and that it's a safe road. Curb gutters, if needed be, repaved, good surface, the whole nine yards. Basically, Lake County's doing what they should do in order to give a road or give the responsibility of the continuing maintenance to the cities. Orange County, on the other hand, has these roads like Golden Gem that they have not maintained. They have not produced a road that it meets code in the first place. And yet, they don't have, they aren't spending any tax dollars to actually bring it up to code where the tax, where it would actually cost the correct amount to actually fix the road in the first place, or to help us with that. Tax dollars, for some reason, go everywhere else but Apocka. So.
Well, if you can't, I just don't think we should have developed that land unless that road's safe, and it's not safe.
Well, you can't develop roads with transportation funds unless you have the development coming in the first place to help pay for that transportation improvement.
There's two sides of that.
Yeah.
The same, it's like with the schools. If we don't, if we look at a development and go, "Well, there's not enough school capacity," we would literally never approve anything. And it's kind of the same thing with the roads. And I understand, I think Mr. McKinney said that, what Commissioner Becker had stated, that sometimes it's a leap of faith. You have to do it, and maybe that forces the issue with Orange County. "Hey, look, we got development on both sides of the road, it's overcrowded." And then maybe at that point, the public, you know, petitions Orange County, or whatever. The problem I have with the whole basis of this is that we keep washing the same load of laundry on Golden Gem Road. And the fact of the matter is, we can't just decide, "Okay, Orange County refuses to do anything about that." They've got, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Richardson, $22 million in the last 18 months in impact phase, and we get literally nothing. And if you go look on their website and look at the road studies, and look at all the areas that road studies have been done since ours was done, which you had brought up earlier, every single district has road studies done, some of them three, since we've had one done. So there is a problem, but is the problem something that we can resolve? I don't know that Ms. Richardson can resolve that, if she can put that much pressure on them. She has been emailing and asking these questions. And then you said that, you know, I think what you said was, "Golden Gem Road was never approved." Christine Moore said, "Nobody ever asked for it." That's ridiculous on its face. That's like saying, "Okay, so Orange County's not going to do anything unless we specifically request it." It's their responsibility to take care of it. And, okay, so that saying that, "Well, nobody's ever asked for it, and we're not going to do it." And then annexing everything is a cure to the problem, so what are we going to do? If our traffic gets, we're growing like a monster, okay. We add another 50,000 people, and what are we going to do? Tell the state, "Oh, we're going to take over 441 because you haven't expanded it?" That's not the way that works. It's got to be a cooperative. And the fact of the matter is, regardless of what your friend Mrs. Moore tells you, they're not spending any money here, and they haven't spent any money in years. And you brought up the fact and proved that. They haven't even done a road study since 2009. So what does that tell you? Over on the other side by Horizon West, there have been three road studies done since 2009 to today. Why don't we have one? Where's our $22 million? Okay, that's great, and I'm frustrated about it, you're frustrated about it. What does that have to do with us in the planning commission? Our authority, what can we do? And I have the same question. Can we make something and present it to the city council, asking, "Will you please go after Orange County and make them fix our roads?" Or is that not even in our oversight?
It's really not in that oversight.
So it's a new point.
Yeah.
We don't have the authority to make them do anything.
And because you do rely on staff to do whatever studies there are or make recommendations in regards to road improvements or land use and zoning items, special exceptions, variances, things like that, that is my understanding of what your main purview is. Obviously, Pam is working extremely diligently regarding Golden Gem and, like I mentioned, also Akoya-Popka Road. Those are two roads that are county roads that are functionally classified that we really don't have jurisdiction over, although we are requesting additional road right-of-way, which even Plumasoronto, when we first started doing some of the work up there, the question was posed to Orange County, "Do you need more right-of-way?" And they didn't give us an answer for probably three, four years, and then finally they came around and said, "Yeah, we could probably use some extra road." But it took us badgering them to ask, "Do you need more road right-of-way?" Because this is a, it's a growing area. We got 8,000 units coming in at the KPI and in a few million square feet of commercials or non-residential. So we're working as fast as we can to make the improvements that we can, but as you know, it does take time sometimes.
All right, is it in the purview of the city council to make that request to Orange County or put pressure on them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So then maybe we need to okay, if we can't do it, then I guess, you know, maybe the public's place to go in there in front of the city council and put pressure on them. I just don't see, and I'm not discounting what you're saying, it's a legit problem, but you know, crime's a legit problem too. We don't discuss that in here either, because it's not under our purview. So, you know, and Ms. Richardson said that they're going to involve the public in these road discussions. Perhaps have a public meeting on, put a public meeting, "Traffic Problems on Golden Gem Road." If you get 40 people to show up and complain about it, well, that gets the attention of the people in Orange County. Elected officials pay attention to that.
Yep.
So just like here, if 10 people come and complain about something, we pay a little bit more attention. So maybe that's the avenue, but I just don't see and I understand your concern, but I don't see why we have a discussion constantly about an Orange County road. That's something that we don't have any authority whatsoever to do anything about, other than just jabber about it, and it makes no difference.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Hitt. If Orange County offered the City of Apocca $2 million to take over, adopt, or annex, whatever terminology you want to use, would that work?
I don't know, because right now, we're working on getting a study done for Golden Gem to find out how many, what it would take to actually get that done. Last I heard, it was somewhere around, it was way upwards of $2 million.
Oh, I know, and that's a lot of money.
That probably wouldn't even cover half of it.
$2 million offer is better than no offer, so.
I would think that if there were anything going down that revenue, you know, down that road, so to speak, the dollar amount, to me, is almost irrelevant as opposed to the percentage of the total cost and what percentage is paid by which party. You know, it could be, you know, the total cost could be 10 million, and if somebody pays 2 million, for me, that doesn't cut it. You know, I mean, I would look at, you know, if we're going to go and we're going to ask the city council to go in front of Orange County Commission and have a discussion about roads, which I don't think there's anything that keeps us as individuals
No, there isn't.
from appearing in front of the City of Apocca Council in the public comment section to talk about roads, nor is there anything that keeps any one of us from going down to Orange County Commission and standing up in their public comment section and having that same, you know, suggestion. You know, I live out on one of the roads that Ms. Richmond talked about. And I look at it, and I'm like, "Man, the traffic has picked up dramatically." I walk there two to three times a day, so I see the amount of cars during a certain period of time, and I just kind of count, count. One's going this way, one's going this way. You know, that type of thing. The one thing that I have come to realize is that as development happens, and the development is happening here in Apocca and northwest of us, because we have the one thing that few have, land. And whoever has land, there's going to have development. And at that point, there will be roads that will be necessary, et cetera. And as you look at some of the developers, there's an extensive road system that they're installing, you know, and many of them are not private, you know, in that process. But the cost of putting a road in, I think, once we start to realize and recognize, you know, what is it per mile? I mean, and you probably have a rough estimate, you know, by width, et cetera, how much an approved road is in per mile, then you can sit down and figure out. But the fact that we've put in $22 million in impact fees.
In 18 months, that's the report that Ms. Richmond gave me that sent to Orange County. So what you're saying makes perfect sense, but saying a percentage, okay, what is that percentage? Well, isn't that percentage calculated by the impact fees that we pay in whenever we develop something?
That's probably the-
Isn't that calculated? Is that, I mean, I don't know how that works.
Well, I don't know how it is, but that would probably be the most equitable or fairest way possible. When you talk about Lake County, and Lake County works very closely with Claremont, with the county, when they turn a road over, Lake County doesn't turn it over until it's done.
Correct.
It's up to speed. So essentially, they're handing you a quality finished product, instead of saying, "Here's the worst thing in the world." We don't have any care in the world what that costs to upgrade or, you know, do that type of thing. And I think that, I mean, the bottom line is, we know this, we know there's development, we know there's impact fees, but the bottom line is, things cost money. If you have the money, you have the money. If you don't have the money, it doesn't mean that it's less safe or that it's more unsafe, or that we're not taking safety into consideration. I mean, safety, this transportation element. The primary factor in this whole report is safety.
Safety.
You know, you talk about crossings and hit-and-runs and that type of thing. That's the primary focus and the primary focus on that type of thing. True reality is, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, the people that were out on Golden Gem were probably very happy right there. Fast forward 10 years, 15 years later, and all of a sudden, we have land. That's where development's going. And unfortunately, things are like an accordion. It's not instantaneous, somebody didn't go, "You know what? Let's make that a divided four-lane." You know, eight years ago, and it got built. And then 10, 12 years later, then development starts. It's just not how it works. So I think the thing for roads, I think, you know, we voted to move this- So, I think the thing for roads, I think, you know, we voted to move this process forward to go to the city council, the item on the agenda today for the property on Golden Gem. But the reality is, we can talk with the Apokka City Council, and we can go to the Orange County Commission, and have conversations there if we want to make a difference. And I think, for us, and for all citizens in Orange County, not just Apokka, go to Orange County, have a conversation. If it's related to Orange County, go there. If it's related to a city that you live in, go there. Because I think going to the wrong entity, and expressing your feelings is fine, but those expressed feelings don't have an impact if it's the wrong venue.
That's, yeah, that's a good analogy. It's like, it's like, you mentioned it, Commissioners, the school capacity and school concurrency. We follow the guidelines. You know, the capacity is the report that comes before, before us for land use and zoning regulations, and then before anything gets approved for construction, or the master, or the major site plan, they have a concurrency agreement where they actually pay into the system. And of course, staff, and you all hear it, and city council hears it, you know, the complaints about overburdening the school system. The issue is, we're following what was given to us on how to get those approved, and getting the funding to the schools, or to the school board. The issue comes up with the state itself, and the Board of Education, how they regulate, and when they, and when the school board can actually build schools. And they don't allow them to build schools until they're overcapacity. Instead of looking at what's coming down the road, where, you know, obviously, we've got quite a few number of units that are coming up, and they can't look at that. They can only look at when the schools are overcapacity. And then all of a sudden, it becomes a, you know, hurry up and rush, build that school, because they're way overcapacity, and there's too many portables, or too many other issues regarding the schools. And so, it's, that's where you need to go to the Board of Education, and the county, the cities, they all kind of need to, you know, put their voice out, say, there's got to be a better way than putting the kids in portables all the time. Or you build a school, and all of a sudden, you got five portables, because the school's not already overcapacity. Wolf Lake, you know, when the first year, that was under capacity, but from then on, it's all been overcapacity. So, I'm waiting to see the Kelly Park, the new Kelly Park School on Jason Dewley, how that school, how long it will be undercapacity, so...
Not long.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. This is an ongoing, you know, concern regarding the roadways, though. It's not, it's not ever, it's not going to go away, it never does.
Well, and I would say, responsible, Mr. Mott, and what Commissioner Ryan had said, the $2 million, it's curious that, and again, no documentation, Pam, have you received anything saying that they offered us $2 million?
She's already said that.
Okay, well, but you said that, okay. And let me just make an analogy, excuse me, let me make an analogy. If you pay car insurance, i.e. our $22 million, to cover you for something, and your car gets wrecked, and they go, well, we'll give you 500 bucks, down the road you go. We pay impact fees for Orange County to maintain the roads. And we pay impact fees for them to do road studies, to find out which road should be done. So, the problem doesn't lie with Pam, or our staff, or even our city council, the problem lies with Orange County not doing that. Now, saying that they need to, well, they didn't ask, they didn't really, that's not our place to do that. Their responsibility, when they take that $22 million, is to distribute it fairly and equally, and to take care of the roads within our city limits. And they have failed to do that, I think that's clear. To your point exactly, Golden Gem Road was the last time somebody did anything to it. It was striped 10 years ago, and it's never been touched. Well, we're paying money in, we're not getting anything back. And I agree with that. But again, and we're discussing it now, under something that's separate from Planning Commission business, other than we're discussing it here, but it's really not something that's relevant to us, other than we look at that when we're approving or disapproving a development. But again, we can't punish the landowner or the developer, because the roads, infrastructure in there, they have no control over that, just like a school.
Our mission statement is safety and adequate infrastructure. We're not doing it. That's our mission statement.
Safety and infrastructure is in our mission statement for Planning Commission?
Yes, it is.
I'd have to, I'd have to say that we are, as a whole. If you take one aspect of the city, sure, we aren't. But as a whole, I think we are. If you look, if you look at a microcosm, you know, a small aspect of it...
There's nothing more important than safety.
Correct.
So, that should be our top priority.
So, if that's our top priority, and that road's unsafe, then you should have voted against the development.
No, I didn't, no, that was a zoning issue.
But it's not safe. The road's not safe. Why would you develop a thing that's not a safe road?
If they come up here, if the developer comes up here, I'm going to vote against it, the way the road is now, because it's not safe, with that development. It's safe to change the zoning, you can change the zoning, there's no safety concerns there. Once they start building houses, then there's a safety concern there.
Well, once it's zoned, it's taken away, it's only a matter of time until that's going to... Well, the one that came through before, the first time Mr. McKinney spoke in front of us, you voted for that, in the positive on that, correct?
Which one was that?
On Golden Gem Road.
Today?
No, 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 no. The one, it was three meetings ago, when there was a thing, and Mr. McKinney, that's why I asked Mr. McKinney, because he came up and said, we shouldn't develop anything, because the roads aren't there, which doesn't, doesn't apply, but you voted to approve that one.
I'll have to go back and look at that.
That's not safe. Again, I understand what you're saying, but you can't say that it's our responsibility to deal with, because it's not. It's just not.
It's in our mission statement. I'll get you a copy of it.
Well, when they have on the agenda, public, safety and infrastructure, then we'll address it on the agenda.
Okay.
Anything else?
I do have the latest statistical information sheet, I don't know, I don't think I gave it to you the last time, for growth. April of this year, as of April this year, the University of Florida, BEABER, as they call it, Bureau of Economics, did report back that we are now at 58,293 people in the City of Apokka. That's not including the people that have come in over the last few months, but that's as of April this year. So, I'll give you the copy of this. This is just one of those things that we put together for general information for the public, with the population for that. I've got the census population for the county on here, the total number of housing units, the number of acres in the city. And if you want to know the latitude, longitude, and altitude, I got that on here, too.
When the population numbers in Apokka, is that incorporated and unincorporated?
No, this is just to the incorporated portion.
Just incorporated.
Yeah, if you take the unincorporated, you probably add about 20, or 15,000 or 20,000 or so.
You think that's all? The unincorporated, too?
Yeah. Give 15,000, 20,000, that's, I mean, the whole city of Apokka is 58,000. So, there's a lot of smaller pockets around, but it's probably around 15,000, 20,000.
I think we got a large section, too, that doesn't show up on those reports, if you know what I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, always keep in mind that the, you know, the reporting threshold for Census Bureau is, is not 100%. So, a lot of assumptions on that.
Is it possible that you can email a copy of that?
I can do that. Would you like a hard copy, too?
No.
Wow.